I guess we can call this meeting to order.
With the flag.
I believe it is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Addition or deletion?
It's a good sound effect. So, we're going to request to add and continue conversation about the situation with the weights in her hands in older unfinished business. And I had written in the agenda that Hal would be present to provide this CAA report, but he actually just submitted one in writing, which you all have. So, there will still be the zoning administrative report, but Hal's not here either.
Okay. If he gets back to me. I have one more quick question for Hal. I just sent him a message. Okay. Introduction of those present. Everybody all sat and signed in?
The signing sheet is back here. Can you go there? We got it. And you all have fancy name tags so we all know who you are.
I do.
I believe. Big time.
I guess. How about the minutes?
How about those minutes?
The minutes.
Any corrections to the 26th bullet?
Everybody okay with them, or something you want to make a motion? I didn't see anything that was out of whack when I got up.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept them as a permit.
Seeing no corrections, both. On favor?
Nothing?
Nothing.
You sure?
You're getting good.
Thanks.
Nice. Okay, pre-requested.
The second.
Favor, opposed, carried. Pre-requested? Anything? Nothing.
Okay.
Any announcements?
Um, I think, I'm not sure if I've seen your report, but thank you to Julie and Keith for their help, but both of those grants that aired for growth culvert HMGP grants have been closed out and submitted.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Okay. Well, the zoning administrators' report then. Okay. Zoning administrator report. Applications of status. The West Polat Hemp Processing Facility zoning permit application is complete. Act 250 amendment is complete and all fees are paid. In compliance enforcement actions, the Slate Ridge is in progress. The Development Review Board has scheduled a public hearing on Thursday, the 20th of June to consider Mr. Banier's request for variance as ordered by the Vermont Environmental Court. There are several other minor issues that he's always worked, that he's also working on to try and settle them below the radar screen. Couple other things he had, just working with people to get him in compliance. Planning Commission revisions of unified bylaws, the town plan. This is a work in progress, my opinion, that the bylaws are not as aspirational and unenforceable as was suggested. Slate Ridge will be a good test case for this. Stone Valley Slate Quarry Operators Association. Zoning administrators working with the association to oppose the imposition of Act 250 permit requirement on existing quarries. The development of the solar PV installations in Polat is a strong card to play against the pro Act 250 folks as they're claiming that existing quarries are environmental bandits ignoring the significant benefits that the... Okay. Ignores the significant benefits that the Polat solar installations provide, particularly the ability to demonstrate prudent site reclamation practices. Al Wilkins. Planning Commission, oh.
I just had a question on that. As far as the hemp processing, that property transfer hasn't happened yet, right?
I'm not aware of whether it has or hasn't. I don't know if any...
But the wastewater usage is not going to change between what it was and what it is.
I think we got, we're billing it for two hookups.
And that's what it was before.
Right, that's what, that's what we determined. Right, because of the amount of people that he had, that he intends to have there is like, less than 10 or something like that, so.
That number will just, it will...
The only time it would, it would adjust is if, if he gets more people there, they have more discharge or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Planning Commission?
At a Monday night meeting, we're going to have a presentation by, what's the name of the company? It's a small scale wind generation facilities. They're developers of that system. Who's going to come and talk to us about small scale wind. And whoever'd like to come and listen to that, like as many people from the community as we can get, so we can, we've already said that we don't want to manage wind towers in town, but we hadn't what the small scale before, we're going to look at the large scale. We're going to look at it and evaluate on Monday night, so like, everybody comes, I could.
What, what time and where?
7:30 right here.
Monday, June 24th?
Yeah. And on July 1st, we're going to have the community mapping, community evaluation mapping, map obsession with the planning commission, and I'll be sending, or posting a warning of that, so if the public that wants to attend, they won't participate, won't be able to participate, but they can attend just to understand what's going on. And if I could do anything for a second?
Sure.
The energy, my advisory group is putting together a survey that we'd like to send around to the community, and we'd like to be able to print it and mail it. Printing and mailing funds. Can we get that from town?
I would think so. You want to use the town's postage meter to pay for the mailing of that and the printing of that? You could print it on just a copy right in here or something like that?
It's only going to be a one page.
One page thing?
Sure.
Just mail it out of bulk? Type of mails? Anybody have any problem with that? Energy survey, so that they can gather up information to... What's...
That's for the enhanced energy plan.
And what basic kind of questions are you going to be asking, do you know yet?
We haven't come up with it yet. We just, we just talked about it today, coming up with ideas. Uh, we're, we need to have it relate to the state guidelines for municipal plans, so we have to, like, just step first and I'll come up with questions.
So, I'm, I'm not really, I'm not familiar with it, so what directs, what are you trying to achieve from the survey?
Just get public information on, number one, what kind of heating systems that they're using. You know, what kind of renewable energy sources they might be using.
Okay.
That sort of stuff.
That's kind of the direction you're looking at, that type of image, okay.
Yeah, so we have some, we have, we're obviously not going to ask 100% of residents responding to a survey, but we'll have to try to extrapolate from the information we do get as to what kind of percentage we got, how small is it, how long is it?
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Is everybody, is everybody okay with them using the town postage and copy machine to send that energy survey out?
Yeah.
Consensus of the board is fine.
And one last thing. Hal kind of skittered over his previous criticism of our bylaws and our town plan and what had to be done to make it more enforceable, and he brought up a lot of points to me. Now he's kind of saying that, oh, it's not that important. I think he's saying that because he missed his deadline. The 15th, he was supposed to have an analysis, but we haven't seen it.
Okay.
You saw the memo that he sent around with his schedule, the 15th we were going to have his analysis, by the 24th we're going to discuss it at the...
At the meeting?
We have nothing to discuss now without his information. Just want you to know that, and I'll be contacting him. I've already sent him an email.
Is that all you had?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Frank, you had your hand up? Did you have a... Okay, thank you. Road Foreman?
Where do you want to start?
Is it back in Springfield yet?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so.
And it's not, not good news at all.
Does everybody know what's back in Springfield?
Degreed.
Degreed, had to go back because transmission had more.
And he kind of left it, when he got it tore apart, he contacted, but you're looking at a very significant expense here. Has a spun bearing on the transmission, ruined the housing, so his recommendation is rebuild transmission, which is, if you part out hours, it's 17,000 and change, if you go and rebuild, it's 20,000. The rebuild comes with a two-year warranty. So.
Do they feel that that was a problem going on before that contributed to this?
We got a lot of, a lot of feedback from that, that pretty, they don't want to discuss that much, I guess. And obviously, I don't think it could have been, no, something going on when it was over there. We hadn't put 12 to 15 hours on it since it came back. They didn't go into that while it was over there.
Right.
But just the same, it had to be part of the cause of what created what they repaired. And I think it's been ongoing since last fall. Remember, we had a problem, we were concerned, and then they said, well, it's a wet bell housing, we changed the gaskets, they sent us the gaskets and we changed them. Of course, then we ran it very little and put it away for the winter, and then noticed we had, after we got going this spring is when we started realizing we had more of an issue there, and then, I mean, when we sent it over, that's, I assume that's where they were headed, but they never went into that at all. Pulled the motor forward, left the transmission in, and everything they did was in the bell housing between the two, so they never went into the transmission itself. But they said they spun it, everything checked fine, everything looked good, and we got back. Well, it was flashing codes and, you know, showing restrictions. I sent Mike a picture of where they pulled out of the stream in the bottom of it, so he could clearly see there was a problem going on.
Now, we paid them. We gave them a check at our last meeting.
I still have that.
Still want to do it as fast.
I didn't say that.
I had told her to go ahead, I thought we were all set, and then I called her and said, hold on to that, so.
Okay.
And they haven't paid for the first course of work. I mean, I don't know what kind of recourse we have, but, I mean, I'm going to talk to Jim Burton to see what, you know, if we can haggle and argue with them and try to get some kind of satisfaction, but it's still going to be an expensive repair. Right after the 1st of July, you're going to do deep into your maintenance budget for next year.
So, they're, they're not really related in the work that they did, really, is, it not, and there's no indication that it would cause the problem that we have now. The biggest thing is our disappointment that they didn't find that when it was there so they could continue with. I mean, if nothing more, we could have got trucking out of it, some of the labor to do both jobs.
Well, they would have pulled the transmission instead of the motor.
Motor.
Unable to do everything at once. So, you have a lot of labor.
So, we definitely have some extra labor.
Yeah. We're going to have two transport, but they ought to pick up one of them.
I would think that they...
Would pick up the second one.
And at least share some of the labor on the dis, on getting, getting to the component from the last time, because if they, if they really troubleshoot the transmission, check the drain plugs and stuff like that, like they should have, if you're having transmission issue, they, they would, like Bob said, they would have pulled the transmission instead of sliding the motor, so. See where we can go, I mean...
We're still discussing, I haven't gotten any answer, but...
We can keep going at it with them and just keep bumping them on it.
Try to get some satisfaction anyway.
So, is Rupert going to bring theirs over for us to use?
Yep, as needed.
So, I mean, I guess there's no, there's no alternative but to fix it, so.
All right, yep.
Oh, yeah, cheaper than the one.
Yeah, we just have to, we just got to be fit, so. If you can keep...
Just a shame, like Mike said, that they didn't thoroughly check it while it was there.
Yeah, that's...
Nowadays, more and more, they don't troubleshoot anything.
Yeah.
Everything specific.
Round trip, first one.
Right, over and go back after.
I mean, I'd at least ask for a couple thousand if it were me.
Yeah, I would think.
I'll get Julie to negotiate for me.
Right.
I'm really going to be mean to people when I need to be.
We just got our bulldozer today, so we'll start on the hair grow tomorrow.
You going to work off that corner of the pit there to try and make a bigger spot there in case someday you want to crush some material?
Yeah, and we're just, the material that we're in, and it seems to be pretty consistent is a lot of nuggets, so if we're down on the other end and we sort all them out, we never have time to load them on and get rid of them. The ones I sort out now are going to be pretty close to a pretty good disposal site, so, you know, we'll try to keep it cleaned up and get rid of it. Go right into quarry with that, so.
And before, before you're done with that excavator, you're going to have a little bit better berm down to the end of that?
Yeah.
Thank you. And what else?
Um, the Dodge has it rusted through oil pan.
Oh, engine oil pan? Oh, that's not nice. Motor comes out.
We've done it once, I'm sure.
You've already done it once, the motor comes out, that you can't change it without pulling the motor. Well, not according to the book, you have to jack, take all the cab mount off, you can push it up high enough if you take all the cab mount off, but...
I believe they pulled the motor out last time.
That's, that's, I think, is, is easier.
And it was approaching $2,000.
Yeah. Not surprised. There you go.
They do that.
Yeah.
Our board did it too.
Yeah. Seems to be a pretty common thing, I think, that the material that they used to build that stuff out of is worse than it used to be. It's thinner and it seems like recycled materials seem to rust.
Well, I can remember, if you remember, our first man truck, it did, Perry runs, and they put it away in the mat. It's just what it is. Other than that, I guess...
One more thing. Ditching bucket?
Oh, no, we got that back.
Oh, it showed up?
Showed back up.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. I don't know the whole, I don't know anything other than it disappeared from, by John Davis' on Brighter Hill Road, and it showed back up at the gravel pit, like somebody did a quick through.
Winged.
After we kind of put the word out that it was missing, it showed back up, so.
That's good.
I don't know anything other than that. Nobody's...
It's still, we have it, and it's a need...
We have it, yes, yeah.
Is, is the town of Polat welded into that?
No, it isn't, but we've done some work to it, so it's been...
Right, but it probably would be a good idea if, if all of our buckets like that, the quick change, were welded into it. They all should be able with that ready, as well the school will tell them, all that well the school pays off.
No, that's exactly what we said. I mean, you know, that thing weighs 300 pounds, you know, even for two guys, you know, load it in, you know, but it was up on the bank, you know, and you could see where they backed it into the ditch, so, you know, I think it was probably an easy load, and, and I don't know, it could have been a prank too. I mean, that's not out of the question.
Right.
It is graduation time.
Well, I would have done something like that, someplace, you know, but we've both people straws before, you know, just as a practice, so I don't know, no, we did get that back.
It's home.
It's home, we've been using it, so it was a two-day scare. Perry went into the gravel pit after driving in and out of there the day before, the day I contacted you, it wasn't there, and he said, hey, where are our backup buckets still on? I said, I don't know why, he said, because it's right here, so.
Well, that's good. That would have been another $1,400 that we didn't need to spend.
Yeah, I know, back in those days, our tractor started more than once in the middle of the night.
Because if there's no need, you're not going to give insurance.
Not for that little bit. We'd have paid, we'd have paid a lot more than that in the first, by the first couple years, so, okay. So, everything else seems to have, for the shape we're in, so. Anybody have any questions for Keith? Doris?
Thank you. Keith, the road in front of our house continues to dip, and I'm wondering if there's any flow, if we do get any flooding, if we'll be flooded again like we were after our...
The culvert is open.
You're working on it?
The culvert is open, you know, you can hit, it will drain, but, yeah, we're going to, we're going to change that culvert.
Well, I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to give you a tremendous amount of pressure, but I really would like it.
We talked...
Not immediately, but certainly before school.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We did talk about that a couple meetings ago, because he's going to have the big excavator right there close by down at the quarry, he can walk it up the road and change that culvert with the big machine when it's right here local, so it is, is in on our plans for the summer.
Well, that's wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Assessors' report? Do we have anything from the assessors now, not this meeting? John?
They did, they're having quite a lot of traffic as far as grievances scheduling for June 24th. So, that's all I've heard. There was a lot of phone conversations. Lisa wasn't here, but Karen was.
Karen was, yeah. Okay.
It's June 24th.
Town Clerk's memo?
We talked about things from the assessment.
Maintenance agreement needs to be signed with two, for the CAI, two separate sheets. And no appeal or suit pending, need signatures of all board members. Okay. So, the CAI technology maintenance agreement's $2,400. Does somebody want to make a motion that we sign that? John? A second?
Well, you will.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? We need to re, we'll pass it down, get your hands on it. Certificate, no appeal or suit pending, need signatures of all boards. We hereby certify that on this date, no earlier than the first Tuesday of February following the lodging of the grand list, there are no appeals pending from the action of listers nor suits to recover taxes paid under protest, under the provision of 32 VSA Section 4157. From this date on, we offer to in evidence any, in any court in the state, this list shall be received as a legal grand list and will, validity shall not be put in issue by any party to any action in any hearing or trial in any court. I'm not, I'm not going to pretend to know 100% what that means. Do you know, John, what this certificate and no appeal means?
What's that mean? We don't have any appeals or suits pending, or?
On your grand list.
That's, that's what it is?
I think it just gives people a deadline to have complaints about their grand list.
Okay.
Think it's to clear the slate, start fresh.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you don't have any?
So that people can't go backwards either.
So, we got to sign it, or?
I think they were asking you some...
I was just curious, I was curious if you understand, because I don't understand very well either.
I'm not aware of, I'm not familiar with this at all. I can ask, I don't know if Karen's coming in tomorrow?
Well, I believe it's... Apparently it's just one of those form type of things that we need to do. Keith feels that it has to do with the Korean list, that once, once it's lodged, it's...
It's clean.
Okay.
So, should we sign it?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Want to make a motion? Somebody want to make a motion to sign that down though?
I'll make a motion.
Somebody want to second that? Chuck will. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Housekeeping, front and sides of building, porch areas need a good cleaning, also the windows, especially the front, should be cleaned, been quite some time since this has been done. So, I don't know if this is something that we hire a window cleaner probably, or? What do you think, Ken?
I know, I know that side will be cleaned when they paint, because they'll power wash and all that. Yeah, as far as the front line.
The side porch needs cleaned, and there's some broken bird's nest remnants and...
Yeah, yeah, but I think they'll power wash that.
We're going to be using that this weekend for the exhibit.
Oh, okay.
Sue and I had offered to clean it.
Hmm, okay.
As far as the rest of the windows?
I'm going to have to be done with the step ladder.
Is there somebody we could hire to clean the windows? I know there's a few people around that clean windows and stuff. Maybe we should-
I hired a guy out of Rockland to clean mine.
Did you?
Yeah.
They come in and make it look awfully easy, don't they?
They sure do. Yes, well, I can clean stuff, but windows are not my forte. That, they're worse when I get done and-
They whip right through it?
Oh, yeah.
It's great and it's really not that bad?
Yeah.
Do you want, want to see how much he charged to do the windows here at ground level? I mean-
I can check him, see if he'll check. What, were they just the-
Well, the walls, the, the outside needs, in the front, needs cleaning too. There's a lot of road dust that comes-
Right. But just the front windows and the side window? Oh, oh, you think we should, the building itself needs to be washed too?
I think the, the front and side porches need it.
Need to be cleaned.
Just from road, road.
Yeah, yeah. Like I say, I know they'll wash this before they paint it, but of course, that's not going to be before this weekend.
Right.
And maybe we could get them to clean it.
My, my power washer doesn't work. Got froze.
But I'm, I'm wondering if one of these cleaning companies around here, we could hire them to clean it. You know, power wash the front of the building and I know that-
Goodrich or Daphne or?
Yeah, they might do that. Probably a good start.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's-
It's right here local, so.
Right.
And there's no need to wash the windows till they, they'll do it all if they-
Right. Power wash the building and-
Frank wants to come over and do it.
Frank, you mind doing it?
Frank.
How much does it cost to rent the equipment to do that?
Who's going to do it?
Is there any, is a town employee that could be available for a few hours?
Not for a while. They got, they got big projects going for the next couple of months with a, with a machine. With two machines on ramp, we're not going to be-
They pick it up.
We don't have time to be cleaning windows.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll give them a call.
Okay. You'll talk to them. Okay. Good.
I can sweep the porch tomorrow for you, John. But I'm not going to power wash it.
You're not power washing it? Um, Deb will be on vacation. Deb will be on vacation, seven-one, two-seven-nine. Sue will cover in her absence and the office will be closed on the fourth for Independence Day. Uh, there are many changes happening in our office. Seven-one, vital records law, increased recording fees, processing, handling of marriage licenses. Have a great evening. Okay. Town treasurer's memo. Two warrants to be signed. Everyone set me. Kinsey Power must have just came as a- I don't think Ian didn't say anything about hooking them up. We were going to switch over and have, have Gary do our service, but apparently they had a contract or something.
Oh, okay.
So, they just-
I didn't see anybody or-
Right. Nobody said anything and I didn't think anything about it, but we were going to get rid of them and have Gary Towsley do it. Okay, so we'll have to keep, keep track of that. Could you, this bill from Kinsey Power, could you, um, when, send me a, a message with who, who I could contact and tell them that we're no, we're no longer going to be wanting to use their service?
Sure.
Anybody want to make a, uh, motion on the warrants? Did Bob made a motion? You have a second?
Chuck.
Chuck. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Who is, uh, let's see between the screen-
Ian is the person who is from, was he from Dover or something? Who is, his umbrella is who Keith's operating under at the wastewater treatment plant right now.
Who's your licensed operator for the wastewater plant?
Okay, and the end of the fiscal year is thirtieth of June.
Yeah, I think this might, like the most bullets I've ever sent to you guys at one time.
Uh, which one was that? Ian gave us a bill?
That's no, so if, that's the final bullet. If you want to work from the top down-
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
I can go through this with you. So, the, the next bullet on my memo was of the financial questionnaire that I had submitted last week for you guys to review. It's statutorily required to be signed by someone on the board, I think by the chair of the board, every year before June thirtieth. It's just something to kind of give insight into how our money is managed and what, you know, protections we have in place to protect ourselves from fraud and, um, I don't know if anyone had any questions about what I had, what, about the questionnaire? How any of my answers were?
I looked it over and I didn't see, everything looked pretty. I, I agreed with everything. There was one. What did you learn at your class that we could improve upon? Anything on that?
So, I definitely think that we should have written policies in place.
Okay.
Um, which I had mentioned last week in my memo. Um, I'm not prepared to do those until we get through setting tax rates and may, getting, you know, tax bills set out. Maybe like August, September.
Okay.
We could, um, come together. I have some examples of policies from other municipalities that we could use to go forth. I don't, nothing is a huge alarm, but I trust myself not to defraud you, but it's not enough. You know what I mean? It's trust and verify. So, I think by having written policies in place, it just really protects us. And also, in the event, you know, that I got hit by the beer truck tomorrow, someone would come in here and know how and why we do things the way that we do things. So, that adds another level of protection. Um, the only thing, I mean, I can tell you some, some levels, some areas that might be concerning to other people looking at this is, I do all of the bank reconciliations myself. I write the, you know, I, I write the checks. Yes, you guys authorize the expenses being paid, but I put together the checks and I do the reconciliations. Um, our protection from that is that we have an outside auditor. I don't know if they review every single reconciliation, but they have access to them all. And they definitely always review at least two. So, that is a level of protection to, to take care of that. Some municipalities hire Memric to do the bank reconciliations for them. Those same municipalities though have an outside audit every three years and we pay for it every year. So, I feel like we're, we're fine on that. I use a signature stamp, but I keep it in a locked cabinet. So, I think that adds a level of protection. It's not just on my desk. There, there's. Every, you know, our records are maintained in a computerized system, which has backups stored offsite and, um, offsite online and offsite in a physical hard drive that's removed from this building every night. And I, and then besides that, the, the lack of written procedures, I think, once we get that done, we'll really be in good shape.
Okay. That seems reasonable timeframe and that, so that we can get, get through this, start the new fi-, fiscal year so that you're not, you don't have everything on your plate at once.
Right.
So, that's good.
When we had town auditors, how did that work? Did they review it during the year at all? Or only when prior to town meeting? Okay.
I know town auditors, the one thing that is statutorily required to be in the town report is a town auditor's report.
Okay.
Um, I don't even know. Do we have something from, we probably do have something from our auditor in the town report. Um, but that was like the only thing that they had to do. Often I, I've heard from some of my trainings that like most of the time, town auditors just don't do anything.
Wing it.
They just-
They just, the town clerk sets up the town report and-
Yeah.
I just wondered how it worked when we did. Because those were elected decisions.
Yeah, yeah. And I think for the most part, like the, the town auditors go to the treasurer and say, "Is everything okay?" And give me some numbers and then they slap together their signature and most of the time, they just don't do much.
Frank?
Is the question about when the reconciliation is done versus a check being drafted and then, and then reconciliation being done and that's without any oversight?
Yeah, the reconciliation is just reconciling the bank statements to what I have in my system.
Oh, you would need, is, is there a lot of transactions you're doing per month?
Well, there were thirty-seven checks today. And that's done twice a month.
The only thing you could do is just generate a tran-, uh, reconciliation report, which potentially is software.
There is a reconciliation report generated every single month that's part of the process.
And just like what you were doing?
Thank you, Frank. So, does anybody have any questions about the sheet that Julie had us look over?
I thought it was interesting though. Appreciate you.
So, I have an original if someone wants to sign that and then I'll-
Everybody okay with me signing this?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yep.
It's your signature.
Mm-hmm.
And this date?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
Thank you, Julie.
Yep. Um, and then the next thing, I have some contracts from Ace Karting, which is our garbage company and, um, Blue Flame. Ace Karting, there's no, uh, I didn't see any changes. It's one-twenty forty-three recurring fee for, uh, this is for all three accounts. The service along with forty-nine railroad ab and three-thirteen Danby Pollard Road.
Okay. Anybody have any?
Uh, as far as Blue Flame, we want to see if there's- This is Ace. Something on the contract that if we run out of fuel again and something freezes up that-
I don't think it's Blue Flame, is it?
Blue Flame is propane.
That's propane. Um, I, I will take, well, we'll get through that and then we'll go on.
Do you want to sign Ace? Everybody okay with just signing Ace?
There's no changes.
One-twenty, one-twenty a month, right? Is what it is.
Okay. It's Kizer that the last two winters we've run out of fuel. More than ones. I would like to see us switch to Marcel. He says he will deliver every week during the winter to the town offices and keep you guys full with. But that's just, you know, that's up for your pleasure.
Okay, so who?
You have it?
I have it.
I have him, I have him at times, but, uh, and there, he's always been very good.
And been competitive.
They're competitive, yep. They're very competitive on prices. And he says he will not let us run out.
He has no service.
I think he does now.
He doesn't.
I think he does. Yeah.
Okay, so now the Blue Flame one, you want to go over that with us?
Yes, the Blue Flame-
Want to come back to the fuel, please?
The town garage, um, there was, it, they didn't recommend any change. It's three-hundred-and-eighty-six gallons. Uh, what we've done in the past is a fixed price budget plan. So, this gives us a fixed price per gallon for three-hundred-and-eighty-six gallons. Uh, the price being two-forty-two-nine. And then if all gallons have been delivered, we may purchase an additional ten percent at the same price per gallon. So, we'd be able to get another thirty-eight gallons at the same price before we would be bumped up to whatever the current market price is.
Okay.
Um, we ended the year paying our budget price on this account with me having to pay another forty-eight dollars to get us. So, we were pretty much on target. Um, and then the issue comes up with the wastewater treatment plant. Um, they had submitted originally a contract for five-hundred-and-sixty-nine gallons. And then I was called by someone who works there because, um, we ended up with quite a large credit on this account. Um, and the person who spoke to me said he thought it was because of the generator not working.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because the generator runs, maybe was it once a week?
Yeah, exercises once a week.
So, that drinks some fuel and with it being out of commission, we ended up not using very much propane there. Um, so we had a large credit. Um, but despite that, he still recommends, um, a little more than doubling our, our budget, um, number of gallons.
Because of, of the quantity that we used the year previous?
The year previous.
When the generator was running, we were, we were up closer to what, fifteen-hundred almost, I think, is what he wants?
Uh, twelve-hundred.
Twelve-hundred. This is Vernon Stone, who I talked to about this.
That's two-forty, two a gallon?
Two-forty-two-nine.
Seems kind of high, but-
So, and I think, I mean-
You want to do some research before we sign it?
Probably have to get a number of gallons and all that, but that, that seems-
Twelve-hundred gallons for the sewer plant.
And I, they did tell me they, they want this by, um, July first, but he said it's not a problem if there's something in the works, um, if it doesn't get to them by that time, so.
You want to look into it and see if there's-
I, I had to pay upfront, but I bought mine for two bucks a gallon last fall.
Do we pay a buck?
That was last fall. And of course, regular fuel.
But it was over.
He's water.
Yeah.
Five-hundred, I think.
So, they come there twice a year?
I'm not sure how many times he has set up for delivery.
I think he's thirty cents a gallon high.
Okay.
I mean, you could ask him to, you know?
Because I, I got a contract, because it's not that.
Okay.
Nine-hundred eighty-nine gallons. And you guys do a fixed budget plan?
Yeah.
So, definitely.
Okay.
Little, little high, I think.
I think it was two-seventeen. So, what, that's twenty-five cents? I think that's what's on the contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's different than, volume wise, I do more because I do multiple places. But I still think you qualify for something there.
I would think. I mean, that's the pretty easy fills there.
Because you're at twelve-hundred is what their budget is for, right?
Right.
That one. Didn't you say three-eighty-six to the other? So, you're at fifteen-hundred. And you probably will enter, we've explored. And I probably asked Vern.
Yeah. Could certainly ask Vernon to-
Do they own, I assume they own the tanks, so there might be a little bit of a-
Oh, they own the tanks?
I don't know. I'm a, I, I-
They probably do. I don't know.
I, I think the, the tank, the sewer plant is set above, is, is set up top, yes. It's not a buried tank, so.
No, but does the town actually own the propane?
I can't remember what we did when we put the generator in.
Because Julie is correct on that.
That makes-
They charge a little bit more per gallon if they own it.
That makes a difference.
Because they-
On our end, so.
Because they have to be responsible for the testing and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tell you, you can't beat their service. And you talk, oh, running down, furnace goes down in our house?
Yeah.
Service techs are in the time of all our radio or facilities, so definitely like their service on the inside.
Yep.
But we can, we can weigh down this. Do you want to call him and, and see if he can tighten that up a little bit or at least explain why?
I can, yep, I can call him, get an explanation or-
And if, who owns the tanks?
See if we can get a little- See if we can get a little, okay.
Do they own the tanks or do we?
Yeah, that's a question for him.
If that one make a difference, ten cents.
Yeah, but still.
Okay, so I'll hold off on those.
Okay. And Ed is going to look into some prices on fuel. I had a message on my machine from the guy that owns Sam U Safe. He, he would like to get a chance to bid fuel for the town poll. I don't know anything about him, I don't do any business with him, but.
I have in the past, they've always been good too, but, yeah.
One other thing to add is, when I was in the fire company in West Pollard, they supplied propane for West Pollard. And I do believe they were supplying the propane at the town or the Pollard Firehouse. If they still are, you then qualify for a bigger discount because they will put them all together being a town. So I definitely would explore that question based on the volume. I don't know how involved you guys are with the fire company.
It's, and it's possible Vernon didn't set up the accounts either. He may not have come up with those numbers.
Right.
Cause Vernon did that when I was in the fire company, he gave us a really, based on volume of multiple places, but still being under the town.
Town entity, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's a question though.
Can she ask for them?
Well, if she can call and ask Vernon and just ask him why for those numbers, to, to look those numbers over and see if, if he agrees with them or if he can do something better for us. Because I know that he doesn't always get to do all that paperwork in the office, cause he's out in the field a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But they do, like Tom says, they do have good.
Excellent service from what I.
If they had another tank on, based on the volume, my rate would be adjusted.
The volume prices could.
Volume pricing.
We, all the employees at Telescope get the same price that Telescope gets because they buy eight thousand gallons a month, so.
And then I think their finance is from Blue Flame too, right?
We buy it from Blue Flame, so that they, they extend that same, that same price to all the employees, so it's, it's a pretty huge savings.
Is Telescope hiring?
Every day.
You're not allowed to leave your.
Okay, so we're.
So the grant paperwork has been submitted. Um, we talked about the check for Nortrax, that I'm still holding that. So I will continue to hold that until we get a more definitive answer about what our next bill is going to be. Um, okay, so then the next thing that I have on my agenda here is the Vermont legal cities and towns passive insurance. Um, we, we are, um, same sort of scenario we were talking about with Blue Flame, where the fire departments are under the town umbrella for these insurances. And there's always an issue with billing.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, there's always a, inevitably, one or both fire departments pay the wrong bill and then, or pay the wrong amount.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a huge headache. They will not accept, like this particular year, everyone overpaid except the town. We paid the correct amount. West Pollard overpaid, Pollard overpaid. They would not accept the final check because it was an overpayment. They would not just take the check and then issue the town money and then I could pay the appropriate people. They wouldn't do that. So we had to go through months of battling to get the fire departments to finally send just the amount due and then pay each other the difference. It was a headache. Um, and now, now they're, they've done an audit. And there is some money, there, I have a check for eighteen dollars.
Wow.
The Pollard Fire Department, it looks like from the audit owes fifteen dollars. The West Pollard Fire Department from the audit is due thirty-three dollars. I got a check for eighteen. So now, I guess, um.
Pollard's got to give fifteen dollars to West Pollard.
It seems like we, it seems like I need to issue a check for eighteen dollars to the West Pollard Fire Department and then Pollard needs to issue a check for fifteen dollars. Just need to, I guess I just am looking for you guys to confirm that that's what you would like me to do is go ahead and express that to them. I don't know if you want to, if you want to think about changing the way we do the billing in the future and just having the town pay the whole amount and then asking the fire departments to pay us. Um, or I did ask that next year when the bills are due, that the, the fire departments issue, they can issue the checks to VLCT, but send them to me first so I can verify that that amount is right before it moves on. We can try that this year.
Try that and see if that will be the best course of action to.
Just to make sure that the right amount, but it's, but the audit thing is always gonna, I mean, this is, now I have to like put this eighteen dollars in and take this eighteen dollars out and then get another fare worth to pay another fare. But I can do that, if that's, um, I mean, I, I don't know that we can just take this eighteen dollars and say, find your speed. Cause it's not truly our money. It's not truly supposed to be our money.
Right.
We certainly do plenty of office work for them, but I don't know how to.
And the, and the check came to.
It, it's issued to the town Pollard because the, the entire bill is issued to the town Pollard.
Right. Do you want to just?
It'd be easier to pay it than bill them.
Just, just pay, well, these are two separate.
Moving forward.
Moving forward. Moving forward, if you want to pay it and then just bill them to keep everything right, that might be easier for you, however you think it's going to be easiest. But this one right here, we have to at least deposit it in our account.
Have to run it through our account and then probably cut a check to West Pollard and then forward this on to Pollard and ask them to cut a check to West Pollard for the fifteen dollars, I guess.
Well, let them look at, duh, duh, to work it out.
I'll, I'll just issue the paperwork to them and suggest how they do it.
I just, I just went through the same exact thing that you're talking about a couple days ago.
It's just such a, and, and so I'll do that with this and then, um, so I guess then the, then the question is, for next year, should I pay the whole amount and then collect from the fire departments?
Probably be easier for you.
Like, well, sit on my hand and hoping that they pay us in a timely fashion? Or I can ask them to please just send the check to me and I will send all the checks together. I don't know which is.
Which, which way do you feel is going to be better for you?
Um, better for me personally is probably to pay the whole thing. Better for doing right by the people's funds is probably asking the fire departments to send the checks to me so I can verify that the amounts are okay, because we might have to hold our, our hats waiting for them to issue checks. And I would rather not do that with the town.
That would probably be, okay.
Okay, so I'll concede that one.
Frank?
Uh, the town votes to give the fire departments a certain amount of money.
Uh-huh.
So what you might do is find out from the insurance company what an estimate would be for upcoming payments for the year.
More paperwork.
Hold that.
Too much paperwork, huh, Julie?
Well, and it's, it's an appropriation, when it's voted on, we have to.
It has to be appropriated.
It has to be the exact amount.
It has to go out at, at whatever gets voted out. We can't subtract the insurance payment out of it. We, this got us, this got to go that way. But thanks for your input. Um, okay, so you got that figured out?
Got that. Um, we, we had, we had some issues with Dell regarding the two new machines that we ordered. Um, being able to get Microsoft Office installed on them. Um, we have a resolution, which is that they issued us a credit. Um, so I want you guys to understand that. The issue, the credit card that we use to purchase the computers was issued a refund for seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Um, I, I think that my plan is just to let that roll. I will be putting one order for the, um, Microsoft Office suite for Kristen's computer on that same credit card. So that will kind of come off and then the rest, in all likelihood, is just going to be used for office expenses. So it's not going to be necessarily the exact same budget line, but it's going to be under the umbrella of office expense, if that's okay with everybody?
It sounds reasonable. It doesn't, it's not going to go off of, under way outfield type of, of liner for the budget, so.
Right.
I'm okay with that.
Um, I have the town, um, property appraisals change from the assessor's office for you to review.
And that's just for the, this chat on one fifty-three. So it went down, perfect. Okay. Ian Trough told me that he intended on reaching out to you.
Okay.
Um, but if you'd like to get him paid before the end of the fiscal year, maybe you'll need to.
I think we should.
Just call him and, do you have all his contact information?
He sent me, um, an email, I think that had his cell phone and his email address, so I will send him an email tomorrow.
All right.
Asking for a bill and explaining that I would just like to get it in our system before the end of the year.
Okay.
You guys won't have another meeting before the fiscal year changes, but I can put bills in.
Okay.
So if we could get, I'd like just everything to be as neat as it can be on six thirty.
Yeah, but he had, I don't know, I thought he was going to connect with you last week, but I talked to him a week or two ago and he said that that was, um, one of his plans the next time he was in town, he was going to connect with you.
Okay. I will do that. I will email him.
Okay.
I didn't know if you had any questions on the budget status report that I had submitted. If you do, fire away, I'll do my best and if not, I'm done.
Anybody have any questions for Julie?
No, I think she's, uh, doing a good job.
Agreed, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so you got the rest of the night off, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Take a look down these if anyone wants.
That, no, I have the original, that was the photocopy on, if anyone wants it or.
I can put it on file before, does anybody, would anybody like to keep this in their possession?
Here's all your papers right here if you want. Do we have any emergency managements first?
Not until the next meeting.
All right, we're down to wastewater. Monday, I, I had a guy come, Chris Hayes, from Simon Operating System. And Keith happened to be there at the time, so it worked out great. And we talked to him at lunchtime. And he's going to work up a proposal for managing the waste treatment plant. We had some other options. We, it seemed like he had a lot of good input. He, he seemed to understand the system good and, and had ideas on how we could deal with the issues that we're having, so.
Where is he headed?
Simon is actually an operating system out of Berry or something, but they have, they operate places all over the state. Um, they operate Wallingford. He operates the water treatment in Dorset. Ian actually lives in Dover, but he has people, they have employees that live in Rutland.
But this, Chris Hayes would be the actual person?
Yeah, right, Chris Hayes actually lives in Dover, the same as Ian.
Oh, he does.
But he, they have people in Rutland. I think he's more of a kind of a general manager, not like a day-to-day operation guy. We, he wouldn't be the guy that would be. He wouldn't be our guy.
I think it's a middleweight school. Clean out, coming right up.
Okay.
They have every five years, they have to do something, I think, or something, it's a standard cleaning they do. And he's actually going to be doing that coming, now the school's out, so.
So his, his, his company does that too, so. It'll be interesting to see what the proposal is.
So I did not get to, in the last two weeks, I did not get to starting to firm the job description. Do you want me to wait on that until, or do you want me, if you have somebody?
I think at, at this point, we only had one person that put any interest, so.
Okay.
Um, it, there's, there's a lot to digest before we can really go much further, I think.
Yeah, I'm just not sure if maybe somebody's putting a proposal together to potentially manage, I mean, my understanding was that this job description that I would be putting together would be for a town position.
No.
Theoretically.
The, the other position was a private contractor, so.
But we wouldn't need, we wouldn't necessarily need a job description. We would.
Right, yeah, so I, I don't, right, I, I'm, at this point, I don't think that it's, that we need a job description. I don't know, I'll, I need to talk to Keith some more because he's been hands-on down there and get a little bit more input from you about how, what the future brings basically, and how, 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 how it's going to best serve the town.
And your contract with, if you hire an outside service will be based on their O and M manual that is put together, including a permit at the plant, you know, because it can be all the requirements in your permit without line required of the, the operator. The problem with hiring somebody is the licensing factor.
Right.
Because there is, uh, a huge shortage of that. That's why all these operation services are flying. Everybody that's done it for years is getting out.
The operation services are coming up. And the other thing with hiring a, a private contractor is the redundancy and the emergency calls in and, and stuff like that that, that a private contractor, a small private contractor doesn't, doesn't really, Jeff had a network of, of other people that he dealt with that weren't very close, but, but could respond in an emergency. They were both an hour away, but, which, which worked. You know, there was always, there was always someone in, in the event that he was on vacation or, or unavailable, you know, but that's, that's another thing, you know. These other bigger contractors have several people to choose from that are, that are capable of filling in and taking over and.
And the weekend factor. What'd he say, Sunday to Thursday and Tuesday to Saturday, or the way they shift it, so they have weekend coverage for the.
Right. But that's, we're working on that and if anybody's got any ideas or, or wants to get a little bit more in depth with it, it, just. Call me and we'll see, but, you know, you know, we can talk more about it, but that's kind of where we're at right now. We've talked to one other contractor and stuff and unfortunately, the price isn't as good as what we had. And to, even a small increase to split up over a hundred and twenty, five, twenty users turns out to be a, a major jump. So we're trying to get, explore all options and see where we can go that will be the best benefit. Okay, older unfinished business. Okay, so I did get an email from Hal about the Berham Ashley Way. And the only thing that. So he, he sent me an email late this afternoon that he talked to Tracy Karas. And he had recalled that they had, uh, talked to the SLAC board. He reviewed the correspondence and the instructions basically from the environmental court. And he will prepare a standard zoning violation notice, compliance letter, if, if that's what we want to do. But I think that we should have it reviewed by the, by the attorneys before we, we, uh, because what we'd have to do, if, if he's in violation, we have to set a rate for the fine. Correct, Keith? He's in violation, we, there's no established fine, so in order to.
Yeah, but Keith doesn't, his group is not involved.
No, I, I'm just asking, not as a DRB member, just as experience from the, his, his town experience, but, right.
The only fine I think that's written in your bylaws is that you go forward with a project without a permit, your permit fee is doubled.
Right.
And that's the only fine that I'm aware of that is written into any of your. And that's the only fine that I'm aware of that is written into any of your bylaws.
Right, so we don't have an established fine for violation. That's what I understood.
The attorney... I thought Hal was mentioning our situation and the other situation.
Right, there's gonna be more than one possibility of a fine imposed on zoning violations, but at this point, we don't have a fine. We don't have any schedule established for a fine. So if we... In order for us to have action on this, this notice of zoning violation, we're gonna have to establish a fine to go with the notice of zoning violation. And I'd also like to make sure that the law firm has reviewed all this case before we... To make sure that they're up to speed with the environmental court decision and stuff. Do you agree, or what's your...
Yeah, I need the ball needs to continue, uh...
To be rolling. But I don't want... I don't feel it's prudent to make a decision without having it reviewed by the law firm.
Have you had any more contact with the law firm?
I have not had any contact with them in the last two weeks, no. That was the first message I had about this case, was this afternoon at 4:30. So...
Yeah, I would, uh... I would say that it needs to be, uh... She needs to be contacted and, uh...
Right.
Start to...
Right, to make sure that...
Fall off paperwork.
Make sure that everything is in order before we proceed with a notice of violation. And then we'll have to vote to determine a fine that we'll impose.
Um, what's the violation?
Um, that Cameron's building is built.
Ashley's right-of-way.
On the right-of-way.
Um, wow, within, uh... Is it a violation or is it a alleged violation this time?
No, there's a violation. It's 14 or 15 feet from the right-of-way.
That's why I feel that we need it reviewed by our attorneys.
A hundred.
And the environmental court said what?
They just kinda gave it back to us.
That's right. So they didn't make a decision?
No. So what he said is, basically, remand from the environmental court. And they, uh... And we'll prepare with the standard zoning violation notice, seven-day compliance letter, et cetera, unless the SLAT Board wants to pursue a different course of action, let me know how you wanna proceed. But I think that he has said nothing about any correspondence with the attorneys about this. So I think that we have to have that all reviewed and see what they say before, to make sure that...
So we got her name and is her phone number on that?
It's not on this one, but it's on some of the other stuff. But I'll make sure that... No, treat... No, the other one, Megan.
Hmm?
That's the other attorney.
I'm not sure. Not on this one.
There's the other. Frank, what was your comment?
Uh, Julie was saying, you're moving with policies, you set up policies, and that doesn't affect the current statute or that's going forward. And in this case, I'm wondering if there's something in the planning commission that has to be relative to violence, but that there's a process for fines to be established through the process. And once the mat goes forward, it wouldn't be retroactive. So I'm wondering if you have the authority to retroactively decide on a fine on a case that's in process as acting in a judgment capacity.
Well, we haven't issued a notice of non-compliance yet, so it hasn't started, so...
Well, if there's no... Nothing written going forward or a history of fines, then can you retroactively place a... Put a fine onto a process that's in action right now as opposed to something that would be in the future where, without a hearing process and stuff to establish this? For the future, whether or not you have the authority to arbitrarily pull out of the hat something on a process that's in play now?
Okay.
That's a key point.
I would say the attorney would...
Yeah, alright, I'll raise that subject too. Merrill Bent is the lady, is our attorney. This hand, so... Well, I'll talk to Hal more about that and we'll build from there, but that's what I wanted to bring to everybody's attention, that we still need to have a review from our council for...
In this case, is the building already built?
Yes.
See, how many years has it been there?
And well, I'm just wondering, in that situation, what does the fine process accomplish? Like, when does that end?
It was...
Or did it comply with...
Do they just pay a fine for what?
It would start from when we issue the notice of non-compliance.
And then they have to make an appropriate change.
Right.
It came to the DRB, and right-of-way is considered just a travelway. It's less than three residents. Had right-of-way access to the runoff, so it's considered a travelway for those who have the same requirement as the right-of-way. That was the DRB, because it actually appeared with the environmental court made a way to do it, just do it back in town. Uh, I think we've got a lot more fleshing out to do before it's just an alleged violation. This time, I think, if you've got to establish that it's a violation before you can certify. Uh, I think, I just think that the whole system hasn't fleshed out yet, so until it does, I don't... It isn't winnable.
Delores?
Wouldn't the state or the developmental review board or whatever, there must be some parameters in the state that would give you some guidelines? The other thing is, with all the things happening in the town right now, I would really hope that you will go through your attorney and find out how exactly to deal with this and, you know, how to set those fines. That's just my recommendation.
That's absolutely what we're gonna do right now. We need... We don't have the attorney's opinion on that, on this particular aspect of this case yet, so we're not gonna act on it until we have the attorney's opinion on how to move forward with it and set the fines, et cetera.
Well, I think that's smart. Caution is, uh...
Thank you.
To be done in these cases. Thank you.
If I were to collect for a quick and keep me remember this, there was some other ones that were out of compliance, and the only option for the owner was to take down that structure that was non-compliant. And there wasn't fine processes, it was a takedown process. And I don't know if the owner had the option of doing it themselves or if some other entity, the town, could come in and force and fill it.
So that's what the zoning administrator and the Merrill Bent will discuss that, and they'll come up with a plan that's tailored for this situation, and we'll deal with it accordingly and move forward with her recommendations. I think we'll go into another executive session so that we can discuss this and...
But Keith says, right, it's an alleged situation?
Well, that's... That's what we're working with. We gotta get it sorted out so that we're on track, so... If everybody's on board with that, we'll push to get that squared away. Okay, thank you. Any other older unfinished business?
Following up on that, I wonder, even though our town attorney, Mr. Thrasher, has not been cordial with us as far as town officials trying to contact him and replying, that we should at least send him something that says we are...
Hal did send him...
He did.
He sent him a message that he copied me on that said that we've retained this other law firm to handle these cases, and he got no response, nor did I.
But he did send out... Great, okay.
Let me look it up, I'll try and find it.
It was up in the air last time we met and heard it. I think that was appropriate. Good.
On 6/6, I want to let you know that the town has retained outside counsel to assist in the Slate Ridge Daniel Banyer matter, and I'll keep you in the communication loop as we move ahead. I've scheduled the 20th June public hearing as instructed by the environmental court to rehear Daniel's variance request. He's provided with all zoning statutory background information and fresh application materials. Let me know if you have any questions or want any further information about this, Hal. So...
Good.
That's where we stand with that, so... He knows, but he got... He didn't respond to me at all or anything, or Hal. Anything else under older unfinished?
Another invitation to bid has gone out on the steps over here, so that's on the website.
That's work.
It'll be in the paper and...
They have a whole month, huh?
Yeah.
2/26, 9:30, okay. 5/16, okay. Alright, any other comment on that? Ed Boe. I didn't see that email you sent me, Tom. Did you connect with that guy, Devin?
Uh, I just asked Kristen if she might come in to send an email about...
Okay. But you're planning on going to those meetings? Excellent, yeah. I don't... There was nobody even listed as offering it anyway, so...
I said that, so the one thing, when I submitted the forms after the last meeting, Mary Kay, Scotta, who I communicate with frequently, inquired as to whether or not every checklist to be effective immediately or July 1, and it was not indicated... The form, as we filled it out, indicated July 1 effectiveness. So I did tell her that, so I suggested to Tom that perhaps that's why he has not been included on...
On any of that.
Communications as of yet, but I did just earlier and before the meeting started, sent an email to Ed Boe and Mary Kay requesting that Tom be included because he's eager to get involved in meetings. So I can't imagine they would run away participation.
That was my comment to him, just go.
Yeah.
You know, it's no...
If you got it, sure, that's all my man wants.
Okay.
But, um...
Oh, for dinner?
I'm just going for food, it's all right.
But it...
So I'll stand by for an answer as well, but they're, I mean, they're both really nice.
Yeah, I'm sure that you'll have no... You'll be welcome, then, fine, so... But that's why I started sending you, forwarding all those emails as they came in.
Thank you.
So, keep you in the loop. That was a trans... The transportation one is the one, they're going to the airport, and then there's another planning commission meeting.
That's tonight.
That's tonight, okay. Alright, so, new business, I guess. What was this, please? Oh, that's the Rutland Regional Planning Commission budget. Anybody wanna look at this? I guess it's there, you're in. Okay, I'll pass it down. And Bob left the town plan. And, uh, let's see, the biggest cities and towns and state agency of transportation. I guess I'm right there. Oh, highway, certificate of highway miles. Class 3, 26.9, class 4, 2013, old, state highway 1488. You already get that too, Keith, or... Where do we... Where do we norm... I'll get to Kristen to stash in her nice pile. Yes, indeed.
The reason you're getting it now is because that's what they're basing their next year's state aid on. They sent the checks to Julie, gonna be based on that.
That, those numbers right there. I did hear, I did hear that the gate was moved farther up your road, John, by me?
I heard that.
But it's still locked.
I, uh, I was gonna head over this week, but the fuel pump went in my side-by-side.
I...
Plus, I don't like to travel when the fields are wet.
So, I don't... Well, you won't get over there this summer, huh?
But I did hear from Jim Jennings from California, thanking... Appreciating that the gate was moved.
That it got moved, so, well, we're... Okay.
Weather. I appreciate where it got moved to is another bet, until I see it.
I don't know, I just, I just got the word that it was up, just moved up farther, so it didn't block Jim Jennings' access, but it's still apparently locked. And I just said, okay, thank you. Thanks for letting me know. I don't know how that's all gonna unfold anyways, so... I guess if there's no other... Okay, we didn't do public comment. Public comment, Julie.
Well, we're supposed to do one behind this.
Just for our records, the town plan, we've already approved it and stuff. I think it's just for our records. Public comment, Julie?
Uh, so I have been asked by a couple of town folk about John Thrasher because he works in the office next to my office and the other John. And so I did want to say, yes, he is alive.
Okay.
Uh, and he as well. Um, I know he is currently a one-man band, and he has been trying to find help for his office and has not been able to find somebody to work for him, so he is busy in that front. Um, and there also has been a family health situation. It's not him, but it is a close member of his family, so that has also been consuming a lot of his time and energy. And so I just wanted to pass that along.
Okay, thank you. Delores?
Uh, I didn't know that Julie would be here tonight, but I was wondering if I could get an accounting of all the legal expenses that have been accrued from December 2017 to date in regard to Briar Hill Road, 541 Briar Hill Road. I hadn't realized that the meeting is Thursday. And I don't know if that will be a problem to get that to me. I'll give you my email if you want.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'd like an idea of that before we go into that meeting. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Need to work for that. Keith, you're good? Carrie, you're good?
Is that the only posting of the developmental review board?
I believe there's supposed to be one in each post office too, correct?
You did, you put on the dirt on the trip.
Yeah, not on the website, but there's a copy of the paper.
They've been in the paper.
It's been in the paper, okay.
Yeah. This was pre-pressed dated May 31st, on the 20th.
So that certainly meets the 14-day required.
And it is here?
Here you go.
Does it have the right date?
Everything...
The poll development review board will meet at 7:00 PM on Thursday, the 20th, June 2019.
Okay. It's the old...
Frank?
Does that stuff have to be posted around a few places in town, or is it just in the paper?
They're both there.
Then, uh, send both post offices.
The town policy should be followed, which is two places, so the town hall...
Town hall and the two post offices, what are normal.
The additional requirements are...
Paper.
Paper.
Is this a regular meeting or a special meeting? Special. Special.
It's a special meeting, probably.
A board holding a special meeting, i.e. a meeting that is not a regular or emergency meeting, but at least 24 hours before the meeting publicly announce the time, place, and purpose of the meeting by notifying the board members and the local news media and any other person that has specifically requested notification, and by posting notice of the meeting in or near the municipal office and in two other designated public places by the municipality. So you guys are more than on it with the town?
We also have our own set of budgets. Got additional.
But in terms of the state open meeting law?
But is that, it's not a public hearing, so it's a special meeting, is that correct?
Is it one, is it a hearing?
It says public hearing.
And it's a public hearing.
In which case I have no info for it.
Zero.
But that did. So you can edit that part out.
Okay.
Public hearing notice is what it's called.
In case you're wondering about how to notify for a special meeting, you have all been informed.
Frank?
On that topic, the open meetings have always, like, worked. We can read through the, the open meeting information.
Yes.
For mom.
Yes.
All entities in town and subentities and everything of any little group that may be part of the town or attached to the town, whatever it is, that be publicly warned and can operate under that procedure. You know what the penalty is for that, that following, for each individual? To miss the meeting and $500 fine. So that's just something you might want to be aware of.
Yeah, it looks like we're all putting a $500 bill.
Well, that's, that's only half of the big money I make for this job, so I can do it twice.
Bad enough we're working for nothing, but we end up costing us money.
Eve, do you have anything to add tonight?
Uh, I was wondering about the, um, so the pre-bid conference, like, for the literary steps. Is that open to the public, or is it...
If you want, I guess, the contractors will meet there if they so desire.
Just to sort of show anybody who's interested to decide and discuss the...
Yeah, if you wanna see what's going on, go for it.
All right.
Hey?
Yeah.
Involvement is great.
Answer any questions that they have.
You can bid if you want.
Yeah.
Go for it.
Tom, anything?
It might be a little bit hodgepodge, but I could give you a good price.
General welfare of the town, CBS News last week and all over the web, including Facebook News, was that Cheerios Nature Valley cereals contain Roundup ingredient. They had to do it, 21, uh, oat-based cereal and snack products from General Mills. Uh, and before that, it was King Arthur flour and glyphosate. If you've been seeing the new to the TV at all, it's a lot of lawsuits around Roundup and all this stuff. People wanna watch out what they're eating, it's not generally known. I advocate to try and be organic.
Which you can spray, I think you can spray Roundup on that.
Thank you.
You might wanna check, Frank. All right, anyhow.
Chuck, you wanna mention it? Chuck wants to mention it.
Mention what?
That we want to end our night. We're all good, everybody's...
Clock can't be right.
Thank you, everyone.